All right, we're going to call to order the regular board meeting of the Cochise County Supervisors. Uh, today is Tuesday, September 16th. We're meeting in the Board of Supervisors hearing room on Melody Lane. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. Any item listed is open for discussion and possible action. Please note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, meaning presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by remote conferencing. Members of the public may also attend the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda to speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by nine AM on the day of the meeting. We'll begin with an invocation from District Two.
Okay, so Almighty God, we gather today in humility and in hope, seeking wisdom and unity as we serve the people of Cochise County. Grant us patience, clarity, and compassion that every decision we make may reflect justice, fairness, and care for all who call this home. We remember those who have influenced our civic life and challenged us to stand firmer in our principles. Among them is Charlie Kirk, whose life and ideas stirred passionate debate, conviction, and a desire in many to engage deeply with what they believe. May we learn from his commitment to speak our truth, to stand for conviction, and yet always to listen with respect? Help us find balance between courage and humility, between conviction and compassion. Bless our county staff, our community, and every citizen. Guide us in this meeting to work together even across differences, to seek the common good, safe neighborhoods, vibrant economies, wise stewardship of our lands, and opportunity. Amen.
Amen. All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with roll call. District One, Crosby is here. District Two?
I'm here.
District Three, Antonori is here. All Supervisors are present and in person. We have a call to the public today. First up is Mr. Alfred Kern. Mr. Kern, you're the leadoff batter today.
And Mr. Kern, I tried calling you back, so I'll talk to you after the meeting. After the meeting, I'll talk to you if you're around. I tried calling you. Okay, because you called me plenty back.
Mr. Kern, you have three minutes.
Everybody knows me by now. I've been coming here for like three years. And it's always been the same for us. We, uh, uh, everybody pays our taxes. We all pay our taxes, but we have no services. We have no services at all. We make our own power. We do, uh, we drag tires on the road to get it as best we can. But, uh, we're trying, we've been, I've been trying to get them to grade our roads, value principal and back. Uh, I haven't had any luck. Hopefully, with the new group, we'll, uh, we'll have some, some luck. Um, and like I said, uh, we're, we all pay taxes, but we have no service. I think one of the services should be grading our roads. They grade, they grade Cipriano, they grade San Mateo, they'll, they'll, and they grade it more than once a week. They stop at Cipriano and don't come any further north or, or, uh, okay, principal. And the, like I said, it just needs to be done. We're, we've been talking about it, or I've been talking about it for over three years now. And hopefully with, with our new group, we'll, uh, get some, something done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, next up is Mr. Tyler Stein. One, sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Tyler Stein with Rural Arizona Engagement. I reside in Penal County, but our organization works statewide and has staff throughout the state, including here in Cochise County. We're here to speak in opposition to a potential policy the county is considering, which is requiring hand counting paper ballots because doing so is more expensive, less accurate, and extremely slow. One of our concerns about hand counting is cost and lack of resources. In counties that have made previous attempts at this policy, it has been estimated to cost them upwards to over $1 million as we would need more additional resources such as hiring more staff to volunteer from their busy schedules to work the extra days and weeks after Election Day. We already have a shortage of staff that can work on Election Day. Let's not add to the crisis by requiring more staff in the weeks after. A better use of resources would be to increase the number of vote centers, hire more staff, and purchase more equipment to avoid the lines up to three hours long that we saw on Election Day last year, causing many people to stand or sit in uncomfortable positions or leave because they had to return to other prior commitments. Another issue we have is that hand counting every single ballot would be nearly impossible to accomplish given the number of people who cast ballots in the county. We have seen in the last few elections, politicians and citizens wanting faster election results, even including knowing who the winner is on election night. However, hand counting will not give us faster results because there are just not enough resources in terms of staff or equipment to count every single ballot by hand to get the results counted in a reasonable timeframe. If we go to a hand count system, this will cause election results to continue to be delayed even further than they are now, causing delays in election certification and even potentially swearing ins all across the state. We also risk having, not having accurate results because of the potential rush to get ballots counted on time. Voting machines have been proven to be an effective way to count every single ballot and get results in a timely manner that ensures every vote is counted. We trust the information on our phone is accurate, so why not trust a voting machine? We respectfully ask that you do not consider switching to a hand count method. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, Ms. Allison Morse. Ms. Morse, you have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we got you.
All righty, thank you again for allowing me to speak. I would just like to share that when I was a very little girl, hello?
Oh, you're, sorry about that. You're good. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna start again. Okay, can you reset the clock? That was a little.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you very much. When I was a very little girl, I had the traumatic experience of watching TV footage of our nation's youngest president, John F. Kennedy, being shot and killed while driving in a motorcade through a crowd of adoring fans in Dallas, Texas. A few years later, I was horrified to see graphic images of his brother, a presidential candidate, Robert F. Kennedy, slain in a Los Angeles hotel shortly after delivering a victory speech. Just a few weeks before that, another great civil rights leader, Martin Luther King, was assassinated in Memphis, Tennessee. Most of us will recall that King's message was nonviolent protest, and that is what I support, in speech as well as in action. Last week's assassination by a man acting alone was vile and unspeakable, a politically motivated savage attack ending in the senseless death of another young man. Just three months ago, Minnesota State Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband Mark were brutally murdered in their home. Outside of Minnesota, the flags were not flown at half's death. Political violence in any form is utterly reprehensible and wholly unacceptable. I'd like to pause now for a moment of silence to remember all those who have been slain because of their ideological beliefs. And then I would like to close my three-minute speech with a plea to our leaders. All of us, and especially our elected officials, should remember this horrific moment in history and resolve to choose a different, nonviolent path to express our differences. I implore you to refrain from inflammatory rhetoric and hate-filled speech. Violence and retribution are not the answer. We must find a way to lower the temperature of this ever-increasing heated political climate and learn to coexist peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Next up, we have Mr. George Adams. Mr. Adams, you are the cleanup batter today.
I'm never good at that. Thank you for letting me speak here today. I've spoke here a few times in the past, but I had a recent heart attack and it's been gone for a year. I'm Fred's neighbor. I'm preaching the same song. I've spoken to, I'm gonna say DOT, I don't want your proper name here for what it is. I'm from Detroit. I just moved here. And I've worked in, uh, Department of Highway Equipment, building and designing both the largest pigment tester machine for text dot in the world. And I'm telling you, what's going on here is totally belittles me of the condition of the road that I drive multiple times a day. It's a two and a half mile stretch of road, Cal your principal. It is horrible. Right now, we had a rain. The washes is so bad. There are people who drive smaller cars down that road. They can't even make it. This is unacceptable. We pay taxes. We get no services. All we ever get out to visit us from the county is people seeing where they can steal money from us. Did somebody build something we don't have a permit for? Is that building a little bit more than 200 square feet? You know, if you don't want to grade our roads, don't wear them out by coming visiting us. And I've spoken to people here in the DOT about the road, and I get a different story from every single person, and I had a meeting with them. They lied to me. In English, I tried to talk to her. She wouldn't even talk. Fred knows her well. But anyway, what I'd like to say is, since I'm retired now and I got a lot of time to spend here, I'm trying to bring a business here to teach people how to work on medical equipment, CAT scans and stuff. And I bought 80 acres out there to live on and to do that. And the county is just totally unworkable. I'm thinking about moving it to New Mexico. I just don't understand why you can't get a seat here and people don't tell you the truth. It's, if any of the people that I have talked to work for me, they've been fired in 15 minutes. And I would like to see this new regime, who I'm not familiar with at all, uh, do something and talk to us and tell us something that's true. They tell me they can't divide grading up between roads that are graded all the time and nobody drives on and grade our road once or twice a year. They say you can't do that. That's the law. You need to change the law if that's the case because that's no sense. And that's all I want to say, and I'll be back with Fred. We're good friends. We actually grew up together in Detroit. Thank you, and you guys have a good day, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry to be so rude. I'm just.
No, 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 you're fine. So just, just so you're aware, we're coming up here soon. We're having some work sessions and some board meetings for adding and deleting uh, roads from the county road maintenance schedule. So that'll be publicly noticed, and you gentlemen are obviously welcome to attend and make your case for why that road should be added.
One quick statement.
Sure.
I don't want you to delete any roads. What you need to do is grade them properly. A road that has 20 cars a month on it doesn't need to be graded every other week or graded every other week. And they say there's some rule you can't do that. You need to change that.
We're, we're, we're revamping the way we're doing it, and that was one of the directions this board gave to our Public Works guys, so.
If you guys need any pavement equipment like traffic counters, MVDs or anything like that, I build it and I'll loan it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, but I look forward to you guys, and you're welcome to attend that meeting. And, you know, we're willing to entertain that, and we're looking at other roads in the county as well. So we only have so many resources, obviously, because we just, one of the, and one of the issues you raised is economic development, and the three of us are all in favor of trying to create an environment where we can bring businesses into this county, and that increases the revenue that the county can then expand to improve roads, okay, so.
In English, you know, I'm looking at training people.
Right.
You know, and that creates businesses here even after they graduate.
So.
And there's a shortage in this. I mean, I worked 53 years repairing CAT scan and medical equipment.
Yep.
And there's a shortage.
Can you just make sure that if you have to leave, you leave your information, your email or phone number with, um, with Lisa over here in case you have to leave before the meeting's over?
Are these guys up by Hereford or?
No, they're, you're out by.
North of Douglas.
Yeah.
North of the Gull.
Oh, they're north, north of Douglas. Okay, all right. Oh, they're your guys.
Sixty miles from downtown Douglas to Fred Mine's house is like.
Okay, all right, so Kathleen, you got, you got a handle on this?
Try to handle it. Just make sure you mean your information, okay?
All right, so let's, uh, let's move on. Uh, that's it for call to the public. Uh, next, we have the consent agenda, consent agenda, consent agenda items one through nine. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve consent agenda items one through nine.
Second.
Any, um, the motion before the board is to approve consent agenda items one through nine. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crosby?
I have known Ms. Sharon Flissar for quite a few years, and I think she is just the, uh, it couldn't be a person with higher character and greater interest in, in anything she does. She's an engineer over there in the city of Sierra Vista. So I heartily recommend her as, uh, number three, Development Services.
And I'd like to say that, um, on number seven, um, I'm, uh, going to appoint Frank Aubries to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and he has, he lives just down the block from me. Um, he's really knowledgeable, wants to do the best for, uh, for our county. He also worked for the county one time, I think in the engineer department. So he's a really good candidate, also has a small ranch out by McNeil, double O W, that area. So I'm real excited to have him on board.
All right, with that, uh, can I get a motion, or excuse me, the motion before the board is to approve of consent agenda items one through nine. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries three to zero. All right, move on to 10. We're going to do a public hearing. My cheat sheet's in here, right? Where's it, where's the cheat sheet? I just wanted to make sure I did this, did this right. All right, so I need to first open a public hearing? All right, so we're gonna open the public hearing? All right, let's, uh, go to item number 10. Can I get a motion to move item number 10?
I'm, I'm, motion that we approve, item number 10, proof series 12 restaurant new liquor license application submitted by Salvador Castorina Perez for street tacos and hot dogs, Guadalajara, at 1100 Arizona Highway 92, Sierra Vista, Arizona, 85635.
All right, can you go to Ms. Mollenheim for an explanation?
Good morning, Chairman Antonori and members of the board. This item's for a new series 12 restaurant liquor license application submitted for, uh, street tacos and hot dogs, Guadalajara and Sierra Vista. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state and law, and no formal protests were received. The applicants paid their processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
Okay, um, is there any public comment on agenda item number 10? Hearing none? Okay, uh, back to the board. Uh, board, any discussion? Oh, sure. All right, so the motion before the board is to approve consent agenda item, not, I'm sorry, excuse me. The motion before the board is to approve the series 12 restaurant for a new liquor license submitted by Mr. Salvador Castorina Perez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, close it? Okay, close the public hearing? All right, next we gotta open another public hearing, and can I get agenda item number 11, move please?
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve series 10 beer and wine store new liquor license application submitted by Michael Eugene Merrill for Rafter M. Meat LLC at 3266 North Fort Grant Road, Wilcox, Arizona, 85643.
Second.
All right, so we'll go to Ms. Mollenheim for an explanation.
Chairman Antonori, members of the board, this item's for a new series 10 beer and wine liquor license application for Rafter Meat located in Wilcox, Arizona. Again, the application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received, and the applicants paid the processing fee. Board staff is recommending approval.
All right, is there anyone in the audience or any public comment? Anyone like to comment on this? Anyone? Anyone? None? Any discussion from the board?
No, sir.
No? All right, therefore, the motion before the board is to approve the series 10 beer and wine store liquor license submitted by Michael Eugene Merrill. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes three to zero, and we will close that public hearing. All right, next up, we have another public hearing. Um, we'll open that meeting, and can I get a motion to move agenda item number 12, please?
I move that we adopt zoning ordinance 25-19, amending Article 2.48.160, special use authorization of the Cochise County zoning regulations to update appeal procedures and board actions as outlined in Exhibit A.
Same. All right, so we'll go to Ms. McLaughlin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is docket R. 2504. It's a staff-initiated text amendment to the zoning regulations specifically impacting appeal process for special use authorizations. Special use authorizations are intended for uses with unique characteristics that may have a higher potential to impact neighboring properties. The Planning and Zoning Commission considers 10 factors for and against a special use within a public hearing. Special use decisions of a commission are final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. The board must consider all special use appeals. Per the zoning regulations, the board may affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the commission. This amendment would introduce a remand option with clear criteria and single-cycle limitation, ensuring the board, uh, may return a case to the commission only once per appeal. It applies the following criteria to the remand decision. Additional evidence or testimony is necessary for a proper decision or new information has been submitted that was not reasonably available at the time of the commission hearing. This is basically the process. A special use starts with the Planning and Zoning Commission. If appealed, it goes to the Board of Supervisors. The process can end at step two if the board chooses to affirm, reverse, or modify a decision of the commission. If the board finds new information introduced or is needed, they can take the action to remand to a date certain. The commission would consider their request, including any new information provided recommendation to the board. The board would then take the final action to affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the commission. Staff feels applicants are affected parties with benefit from a structured process that allows late arriving relevant evidence to be considered without bypassing due process. Overall, the option is intended to improve the transparency and fairness of county decision-making. Here is a sample motion the board could use to make to move a remand. It's important to provide precise direction to the commission and specific dates. Uh, these are all public hearings, and they must be properly noticed. This amendment was heard by the commission at their last regular meeting on September 10th. There was no public comments. The commission voted unanimously, actually a vote of eight to zero, recommending approval to the Board of Supervisors. This concludes my presentation. It's a public hearing. I am serving as applicant. I'm available for any questions.
All right, any comments from the board?
Ms. McLaughlin, I read that whole document accompanying our agenda item. Did you write it?
Yes.
You wrote all of it?
Yes.
That was very good writing.
All right, so I just would like to confirm it was, um, I'm really glad about this because one thing I found that I think this will help everybody because we were getting new information after the Planning and Zoning Commission had made the decision, and this way having it go back, people will understand, do everything you can with the planning and zoning. Don't leave anything out because you'll just be remanded back to them if you introduce new, uh, information to us on appeal. So I think this is a really good, clear way of being transparent and letting everyone know. You know, don't bring in something at the last minute as a, you know, like a second form of information. Just bring it all up in the front, and we can be really clear and transparent with that. So thank you for doing that.
Mr. Chair, have a point of inquiry.
Sure.
Are we in a public hearing right now?
Yes, we are, sir. Okay. We have to do right now call to the audience, so if there's anyone out there that would like to speak to this agenda item? Anyone? Going once? Going twice? All right, no one has spoken? All right, so the motion before the board is to approve and adopt zoning ordinance 25-19, amending Article 2.48.160, special use authorization of Cochise County zoning regulations to update appeal procedures and board actions as outlined in Exhibit A. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you. Christine? All right, we will close that public hearing. All right, and now we will open the next public hearing. Next public hearing, can I get a motion to move agenda item number 13, please?
Mr. Chair, I move, we adopt resolution 25-28 to establish James Ranch Road as a declared county highway.
Second.
All right, so the motion before the board is to approve the resolution for James Ranch Road. We will go to Ms. Watkins for an explanation.
Good morning, Chairman and Board. Um, James Ranch Road, as you know, is a road that's gonna serve the new port of entry, the commercial port of entry, and it goes from Highway 80 down to the international border. And this, to declare it a county highway, then gives us the authority to acquire the right-of-way and to get the construction done. ADOT is in the process of designing the road now. And we're in the process of starting the process to acquire the right-of-way. James Ranch Road, this is the start of it at Highway 80 looking south. It's a dirt road that has one or two people living out there. Uh, these are all the parcel owners that we will be acquiring right-of-way for the road and for a drain adjustment on the west side of the road. And where the culverts are going, there's quite a few box culverts on this project. Showing the James Ranch Road alignment with the flooding. There's a flood zone at the south end. This allows us, as I said, to allow for public funds to be included for the road for the maintenance and the purchase of the right-of-way. And ADOT is doing the construct, the design, and will be in charge of the construction also. The NEPA clearance was finalized by ADOT of April of this year, and that then gives us the authority to go ahead and acquire right-of-way after the NEPA clearance is done. That concludes my presentation.
So after the road is constructed, do we take it over? Does it become a county road?
County maintained road, correct.
Okay, okay.
That, that whole road will be a county maintained?
It'd be county maintained road, yes.
Mr. Crosby? Which way is downhill toward Douglas? Which way is downhill for the water to drain?
Douglas, correct. West to east.
And so that is, that is, uh, where, where's the water gonna go? Is there like a?
There's box culverts. I think there's 27 total box culverts. Um, there's three different locations. There's one location here that will have box culvert called the North Wash. The Middle Wash is down here, and then the Southern, what we're calling the Southern Wash is down here. And all of those locations will have multiple box culverts.
Okay.
I believe this one is 17 box culverts, like six and 10. There's multiple box culverts. You see their box culvert or a bridge. I mean, the box culverts are a bridge structure.
Yeah, they're awesome. Okay, you save me a lot of time. Where is the water gonna go?
It will flow down to the Whitewater draw.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Watkins.
I got a question.
Any additional discussion?
And you're gonna be raising the road too, right? To, for the flood control issue?
The road will be raised about six to seven feet to allow those box culverts. Those box culverts are 10 feet wide, five foot tall. So the road will go over those box culverts. And then on the west side, there is a 300-foot drainage adjustment that we're acquiring because when you raise those, the road to get the water to flow into the box culverts, then it back up, backs up onto the private property. then it back up, backs up onto the private property to then to collect. The box culverts have a 25 year design, so the 25 year will go under the road. The hundred year will go underneath the road with no overtopping of the road itself, but the water will then back up on the property.
How, how long will it take to get filled with sand and dirt?
If they're designed right, will have self cleaning velocity, so they shouldn't be filtered dirt.
Okay, that would be nice, thank you.
But if it is, then yes, you would have to go in there every few years and clean out the sand.
ADOT's doing that.
No, this would be a county road.
Oh, the, no, yeah, we're doing the culverts? I thought you said ADOT was doing the design.
So they're paying initially for the, for the road and then we're going to be the ones that maintain it after that, right? Is that what we're?
Yes.
Okay, and so let's just say for the fun of it, how much is this road going to cost right now? We think because I, 48 million for two lanes each way and a one in the middle? Four lanes?
Four, four lanes each way, turn lanes at certain locations.
Okay.
It's a rear raised median.
Okay, so I'm just hoping that we keep on seeing it, then it will be the reality and we'll get the money maybe soon, next year. So I'm putting it out there to the universe.
It's 27 million in the budget, still trying to acquire 20 more million for a grant.
We'll have to start banging on the doors.
All right, that's it. All right, thank you, Ms. Watkins.
Public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, is there any comment from the audience on this? Going once, going twice? Okay, hearing none. Uh, the motion for the board is to adopt resolution 2528 to establish James Ranch Road as a declared county highway. All those in favor say aye, aye, aye. All right, motion passes three to zero. All right, next up, we have a special one from, oh, oh, I'm sorry. We closed the public hearing. Next up, we have a special agenda item that will be moved by Mr. Crosby.
Okay, and from time to time you note that I seem to keep everything, which I do, and this is my declaring resolution, uh, that Cochise County is.
All right, you gotta move, you gotta move.
I'm working on it.
Okay, 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 okay.
I move we approve a proclamation designated September 4th, September 14th through 20, 2025 as Constitution Week. And I do also have.
Second.
All right, now it's yours.
The, the current proclamation goes like this. Constitution Week, whereas it is a privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 14th, 2025 through September 20th, 2025 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, we, the Cochise County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the week of September 14th, 2025 through September 20th, 2025 as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. Approved and adopted the 16th day of September 2025 by us.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Every week is Constitution Week.
That you can see every day.
Yeah, every day.
Every day is Constitution Day.
All right, so, uh, with no further discussion, the motion before the board is to approve the pop proclamation designating September 14th, 20, of this week, uh, Constitution Week. All those in favor say aye, aye, aye. Motion passes three zero. Welcome to Constitution Week.
Right.
All right. All right, next up, uh, can I get agenda item number 15 moved, please?
I, I move that we approve sub recipient agreement 230411-02 amendment one between the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office for Operation Stone Garden Equipment in the amount of $201,782, extending the period of performance to be effective April 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2026.
Second. All right, it's the motion before the board. We'll go to Mr. Foster, Lieutenant Foster, sorry.
Lieutenant Foster will retire in seven months, so it could be Mr. Foster.
Lieutenant, Lieutenant Foster for an explanation.
Uh, good morning distinguished board members. I'm here requesting that the board approve an extension of what Supervisor Gomez just read, uh, for 201,782 dollars, uh, to purchase digital, uh, analytics equipment, uh, that's well needed for our office. Back in 2024, the board originally approved for us to purchase this equipment. Uh, at that time, we believed we only needed one. We secured another funding source, so we tried to get some different equipment with this money, um, which was eventually denied. In the process of us, uh, trying to get this other equipment with the, uh, remaining monies that was left in this contract, we learned that we do need this equipment badly as, uh, the, uh, element that we're dealing with is using a lot of, uh, digital equipment in that we are overloaded trying to, uh, investigate and open up that equipment. So we do need some more, uh, analytics equipment in our office.
Any other discussion or questions for the lieutenant?
Thank you for your presentation, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lieutenant. All right, so with that, the motion before the board is to approve the sub recipient agreement 230411-02 amendment one between the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office in the amount of 201,782. All those in favor say aye, aye, aye. Motion passes three to zero. All right, can I get agenda item number 16, please?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve fiscal year 2026 court appointed special advocate CASA funding agreement with Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts, AOC, and the Cochise County Superior Court in the amount of 145,824 effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right, so motion before the board, uh, is to prove the agenda item. We'll go to Ms. Shipley for an explanation.
Good morning Supervisors. Uh, court administration is requesting that the board approve the fiscal year 26 CASA funding agreement from the Arizona Supreme Court. This funding agreement provides wages, employee related expenses and operating expenses for two full-time equivalent employees which are currently filled. The CASA program recruits, trains, and supports volunteers who are appointed by judges to watch over and advocate for abused and neglected children in the court system and foster care. CASA volunteers stay with each case until it's closed and the child is placed in a safe and permanent home. Any questions I can answer for the board at this time?
Any questions?
No.
Uh, how is it going?
Good. The recruiters get out there and they do events at libraries, churches, they go out and guest people. They're really ramping up their recruitment efforts. We have advertising campaigns and different media forums, so, yeah, we've been successful in recruiting a couple more volunteers this year.
Okay, so, uh, the volunteers, these are not, uh, what, what kind of volunteers are these?
Uh, most of them are, a, a lot of the volunteers that we find are in the Sierra Vista area that tend to be either retired school teachers or, um, spouses of military personnel that are in the area.
Okay, and these are the special advocates?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, hearing none. Uh, again, the motion before the board is to approve fiscal year 26 court appointed special advocate funding, uh, agreement with the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Office of the Courts in the amount of 145,824 dollars. All those in favor say aye, aye, aye. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to move agenda item 17, please?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the city of Yuma, Yuma County, and the Arizona Department of Public Safety, DPS, for Cochise County to join the Arizona statewide public safety radio system.
Second. All right, and we have Alan, the IT guy.
Yeah.
Here to explain to us what this motion is for. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. So this agreement is actually a really cool one. Um, it is going to allow us to join our radio system, um, with the radio systems from Yuma, Yuma County, DPS, and also gives us the potential to then expand beyond that. Um, there's no cost to us. It's just going to, um, increase our operational capabilities, um, and it's kind of a, you know, one of these wonderful win-win, um, scenarios, at least I, I believe so.
So any questions for Mr. Gordon?
No, sir.
No, sir, all right, thank you, sir. All right, so members, uh, the motion before the board is to approve the IGA with the city of Yuma, Yuma County, and the Arizona Department of Public Safety for the Cochise County, uh, for Cochise County's ability to join the Arizona statewide public radio system. All those in favor say aye, aye, aye. Motion passes three to zero. Okay, uh, next up is state and federal legislation. Um, not really much going on, is, is anything, uh, either you would like to add about that?
About the state and federal, no, not at this moment.
No.
No, sir.
All right.
Let's count on you.
Well, we, it's, it's, it, the legislature's not in session, so it's a little quiet right now. Um, and then the, the feds just got back from recess, so they're just getting geared back up, so we'll keep an eye on what's going on. Uh, and next we'll go to the county administrators report, Joe, Mr. Casey.
Uh, yes, just a, a reminder that next week is, uh, the voting day, um, on 23rd. You know, if you're in CD7, please come out and vote. There's going to be vote centers at Bisbee, Douglas, and in Herford for that one. Um, there's also mentioned earlier was the, uh, jail district, uh, meetings, town halls coming up, um, tomorrow and then also the following week on the 24th. A reminder to those in Sierra Vista and Benson from 6 to 8. And then the county fair is also, uh, coming up on the, uh, 25th through the 28th. Um, so just encourage people to come out and then support the, the county and the county fair.
Right. All right, so next we'll go to current events, District 1. You have anything to report, Mr. Gordon?
Well, we have a, uh, meeting this afternoon where with we may speak about VSTL, Voting System Test Laboratories, and how does that affect our elections? And perhaps some of our audience members would want to know about that. Although it is an executive session, but I will be available to talk about it after this meeting. Thank you, that's all.
Uh, Ms. Gomez, any?
Yes, I actually have a lot to report, so.
Okay.
Um, the county fair, you know, last year, it is the biggest event in Cochise County. 53,000 visitors went through there. And unfortunately, our county tourism board does not do any marketing for it, so I'd like to see that change. Um, it, there are, the unlimited risk, risk band is sold out at the county fair, but you can get some at Cal Ranch Store in Sierra Vista. Reminder that Thursday, uh, is Buddy Day and I guess most of the schools come out, so the unlimited risk band is not valid that day because they give such a big discount. Um, so we have Thursday, Friday, Friday night is going to be music that's for the Latinos, Latino cowboy music. Saturday is country western, Thursday is just kind of rock and roll. And then on Sunday is Earn Your Spurs. This is a not-for-profit. It basically money raised gives to scholarships for, um, kids in agriculture in our area. And so there's a lot going on on that Sunday. Ranch rodeo, bronco riding, I mean, it's really a great event. So where Sunday was kind of low key and you were just watching the auction, now there's going to be a whole, whole lot of things going on. Um, and you can go to our website and it will give you all the information because it's quite a bit. Um, I also wanted to say that upcoming events in Tombstone is going to be October 17th through 19th. That is the 96th Annual El Dorado Days from, um, 8 to 5 PM. In Bisbee, we have December, September 26th, 27th, 28th is Bisbee Blues Bluegrass Country Pub Crawl. Uh, September 27th is going to be at the John Quill Hotel. Yeah, there's going to be music and some art. September 28th, Project Wildlife Upper Vista Park Garden Party from 5 to 7. October 9th through 12th is the Clean, Clean Air Festival. Sign up now. Each year artists come to paint Old Bisbee and the surrounding area and to compete for $800,000 prizes. The pieces are for sale too. So, um, October 18th, we can't forget is the Bisbee 1000, the Great Stairclimb, a 5K that feels like a 10K. And then October 25th is Bratz, Bisbee Rolling Arts Transport Society Build Your Own Brat. Um, so it's supposed to be very, very funny. So that's what's going on in Bisbee in October. And then, um, in November, Douglas is going to have at the county fair, one of the first is going to be, um, the tribes, that Biyaki, Apache, I forget the other ones, I have more information, but, um, pretty soon and that'll be in November and that's going to be very a first for Douglas and for the community and I'm really looking forward to that. And with that said, that's it.
All right, so.
Oops, sorry.
Oh.
October 8th, out here in the parking lot, is going to be Justice and Care Collective for the homeless. So there's going to be a lot of, um, resources for those who are homeless or have behavioral issues. And I guess there's going to be what they call, I had my notes and I forgot, it's like justice for the homeless. So if you had warrants, some of the homeless have warrants for loitering or those kinds of things, they'll be able to see a judge. The judge will take care of it and then there'll be resources for the homeless to be able to, to, to use. And that's going to be right out in the health department parking lot, eight, I'm sorry, 12 to 4 o'clock on October the 8th. That's it, I'm done.
All right, hey, so going on in District 3, uh, this weekend, we have the Benson Lantern Festival. Uh, that's going to be at the San Pedro Golf Course, uh, starts at 3 o'clock, but they don't obviously release the lanterns until it gets dark. It's those, you know, the Japanese balloon type, type lanterns, uh, probably get a lot of UFO reports, uh, when they, when they let those loose. And of course, we got Rex Allen days coming up, uh, in Wilcox, the 2nd through the 5th. And I'll be bringing you more on that, so big Rex Allen, the singing cowboys out there for that. So that's all I have for District 3. So, all right, so next, uh, meeting will be this afternoon at 1 o'clock. It will be a special possible executive session to discuss recent Arizona Supreme Court decision in Sanchez versus Maricopa County. Uh, and with that, uh, any last comments?
Um, no, just one more comment, I'm sorry. Uh, I just want to make sure for the record because I had talked to our deputy administrator, Joe Casey, that we wanted, I wanted to add two more work sessions at some point in time. One would be on the tourism board, what they're doing with our money and how they're promoting the county. And the second would be on the comprehensive plan that we were supposed to vote on in this, in, you know, the spring, but we've had so many work sessions, so much going on, that I think we need to come back to that because that's going to be coming up again, right?
Uh, yes, those have both been added to the, the list of work sessions.
All right.
Thank you.
So with that, uh, we'll see everybody at 1 o'clock. We're adjourned.